I will call to order the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is Tuesday, February 2nd. The time is 6:01. I would like to start this evening's meeting by asking all folks here to observe a couple of moments of silence for William Bill Thomas. Bill was a member of this Select Board. He was a member of the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And he was also on the Rutland Town Select Board. He was active in the Thomas Dairy, his family's business. And all in all, a very longtime public servant who did very well by our town. So our thoughts are with his wife Helen, their daughters, and all of his grandchildren. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. The orders have been prepared. They are in the Town Clerk's Office. I have signed. So please, Select Board members, when you have a chance, stop in and sign as well. We'll start with the Select Board minutes for... We've got two sets, one for January 14th. And that's a short one, so why don't we do that? The Rutland Town Select Board meeting is the Board of Health. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14th meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Right, seconded.
By Joe. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, the minutes of the meeting of the January 19th Select Board meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Don't move.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any deletions, additions, corrections? All in favor of approving the January 19th Select Board minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you have approved the minutes. And please, when you come in to sign the orders, please also sign the minutes. Thank you. All right. Questions from the floor, public comments? And I think we have Howard Burgess, who wants to address us for a moment, please.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I sent the Board earlier information on Sugarwood Hill. Road name we have a 911 issue with. We've got three houses up there that sit on a dead-end street, so to speak. And it's an actual town highway. And being that it's a town highway, it has to be treated as a separate road. And it needs its own road name. And I've been talking with Tyler Hermerson from 911. And basically, our suggestion, what we've come up with, is naming this street, perhaps Sugarwood Hill Extension or Sugarwood Hills Spur, something like... I keep the name Sugarwood Hill into it. But we have to straighten that out because the numbering in there is all messed up. It doesn't make any sense at all. So I don't know if you all had a chance to review it or not, or you have questions. But it's unfortunate that these three homeowners will actually have to change their addresses. But we meet 911 standards. That's the way it is.
So do you need our approval, Howard?
Yes, I do. The Select Board has to approve this.
So I would move to approve your recommendation.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Sharon, seconds. Question, this is not a town road, correct?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is?
A town road that Byron maintains. He plows it. And it's different from a lot of others which are not... Which are private roads, we call a place. But this is actually a town road. And Byron maintains it.
So question, JP, did your motion include the word "extension"?
Sure.
Okay. Further discussion?
Can I just get what the actual name of the road is going to be?
It will be Sugarwood Hill Extension.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Aaron, anything?
Nothing here.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, all in favor of the motion to name the Sugarwood Hill Extension and to renumber the numbers according to Howard's memo? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Howard?
That's it. There was another issue to do with Quarterline Road. Byron got into it. There was a mix-up between the 911 maps and what they thought was the V-Trans maps. And Byron's gonna... He's on top of it. He's gonna straighten it out, he said, this month. And he does whatever he does with the mapping. It was to do with a section of Class 3 road, which they thought was sandwiched in between two Class 4 roads. Byron could elaborate on that, but it's... It's good to fix it.
Okay. So wait and see on that one. Thank you, Howard. Are there any other members of the public not on the agenda who would like to address the Board? Okay. I guess not. So we'll proceed along. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I've got a few things for you all. In the Select Board packets is the updated meeting schedule and agenda items. Number two is for new business letter A, copy of the indemnity agreement. Number three is for new business letter B, information from Jim Schultz, the delinquent tax collector, for tax sale. Number four are current budget status sheets from Carrie. And we wanted to include those. That was one of the recommendations from the auditor, that the Board have these on a regular basis. So we're going to endeavor to make sure we get them too on a regular basis. So Carrie can touch on those on her section if there's anything to go over. On... In the email I sent out to Board members earlier today, we had a couple of things come up over the last few days. One was a discussion we started having on polling place signs. We started looking into it. And the Secretary of State has some recommendations, which I attached that to the emails this afternoon. And one of the things it recommends is having a policy about signs, of which we currently don't have one. So that leads to some other... That could lead to some other issues. So I started to draft one for the Board to discuss if you want to do anything with that. That's there. You have an invoice from StanTech. That is for the monitoring of the closed landfill in Northwood Park, to do that two times a year. And I gave you the list of liquor licenses you're gonna have to approve tonight. It was a big list, so I gave you the details, so everybody can have those ahead of time. And the last thing I have is during our Highway Committee meeting separately, Byron and I were talking with Robert Clark from Otter Creek Engineering. And we were talking about digitizing the... Some of the town plans we have downstairs, some of the utility maps and things like that. And Robert said they have a very large scanner at their office, which could help facilitate scanning those records and digitizing them, which could be very helpful for us for storage and retention. So he took one set, and they scanned it. And he said that it went fairly easy. And that they could do basically whatever we wanted, and they would charge us $40 an hour for scanning services. So Byron and I kind of both agreed that that would be a very worthy undertaking to do. We don't have any place in the budget specifically to draw that from at the moment. But would be something that we should look into in terms of being able to store our documents more effectively, be able to search them more effectively. And if something happened downstairs and we lost the documents, we'd have them still on digital form. So we're gonna put that in the back of everybody's mind and see what we want to do with that and if we want to use them to help with that project. So that is everything I have on my desk. See if we have any questions.
Well, let's take them a few at a time. You've given us a full plate there. Let me start with the last first, the scanning capability. I know we don't have it in the budget, but are there... Is there a methodical way that we can go through and identify the ones that we want to save and have scanned?
So we do have an index of the plans downstairs. We certainly wouldn't want to do all of them. There's about 200 to 250 different ones down there. And some of them are small, some of them are very large in numbers of pages. But we would go through and start with, like Byron and I were discussing, like the south end sewer extensions and some of the more critical infrastructure, those kinds of plans, the engineered drawings, as-built plans, you know, final drafts of ones. But that would also allow us to go through. And I know there are duplicate plans in and amongst those downstairs. That would help us go through some of those too. But we would certainly prioritize mainly utilities and property maps that apply to us directly.
Okay. Any thoughts from the Select Board? Joe?
I think it's a great idea. We just gotta figure out probably some game plan after, like Bill just mentioned, prioritize what we want to do and figure out how to pay for it. You know, maybe, I don't know if we have... That doesn't really fit under engineering, and it doesn't fit under a lot of things.
Yeah, bullshit.
I'm not really sure where we could put that in. But I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Mary?
Yes, Byron?
I think some of that, a lot of the plans, at least the ones that I'm most interested in, are either water or sewer plans. And I wondered if what would be appropriate would say dedicate $1,000 out of the sewer fund for that. And we'll go as far as we can go, and then wait another year or wait another budget year or something, and then do some more.
Okay, I like that idea. Does anyone on the Select Board wish to treat that as a motion? And we do have the money in the water sewer funds to take care of it.
Don't move.
Motion made by Sharon? Sharon?
Yeah.
Seconded?
Excuse me?
Sharon made the motion. Joe, are you seconding?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
So if my calculations are right, that gets approximately, what, 25 hours?
Correct.
That $40,000 would do about 25 hours.
That's correct.
Yeah, you could probably get a lot of documents done in 25 hours, don't you think, Byron?
Well, that's essentially three eight-hour days.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that. That's a good place to start and see how it goes.
Okay. Motion made by Sharon, seconded by Joe, to take $1,000 from the water sewer fund and begin digitalizing the water sewer records, plans, and so on downstairs. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's do StanTech next. Bill, is this our usual water quality sampling around the landfill? It looks at...
Yes, this is our biannual testing.
Okay. Time and expense basis estimated at $9,900. We are required to do this, as I recall. You folks, the Select Board had a chance to review the proposed contract? I will entertain a motion to approve and authorize me to sign as Select Board Chair.
Don't move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Aaron, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. All right. What else do we have, Bill? I think we're gonna take up the tax sale on B below, and we'll wait on that. Oh, liquor licenses.
The signs.
Oh, the polling place signs, okay. I was talking with Bill about this earlier and recalling when... Actually, it was Chris Howland and I, when we were chairing our respective political parties in town, we did a draft policy and presented it to the Board of Civil Authority, and it didn't go very well. So I'm wondering now if there's this slightly different direction here, because the Select Board could adopt a policy, if it chose to do so, on signs at polling places. Any thoughts about this? Do we move forward on it? Do we... I suspect you folks may want to have a chance to review it and review some of the statutes behind it. What's your thought about the Select Board establishing a policy on signs at polling places?
Mary, what are we talking, political advertising signs? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Because I thought there were rules out there that govern that. But I guess we can adopt something more stringent? Is that what I'm getting from this?
The way it was explained, and as I've reading it through, it is something more stringent, and it would be a policy that would apply to everyone. If we don't have a policy in place, then individual candidates have to ask individual permission of the Select Board for putting up signs at various locations. And my suggestion would be that we read this over, let folks know, many of whom are on the call tonight, that there is such a policy under consideration. And set this for discussion if we want to do it or we want to consider it. Set it for discussion at our next Select Board meeting.
That sounds like the best way. You know, give people a chance to think about it, come up with some ideas.
Joe, I was looking through some of the rules. And there are rules. They specifically don't apply to town-owned property. So they address pretty much everywhere else except there. And they actually, reading them specifically, leave up those rules to the local municipality.
Okay.
So they address things like private property, and they address like AOT rights of way and things like that, but they don't address municipal property.
Okay. And Bill, before we get into a discussion at our next meeting, would you check and see whether the school property would be governed by a policy by the school board as opposed to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna ask Bill to put that on our agenda for our next Select Board meeting. And those of you who are candidates might want to read over the information and be prepared to comment if you have some thoughts on that. Okay. Liquor licenses.
Move to approve all of them.
Okay, these are liquor licenses for 99 Restaurant, Johnny Boy's Pancake House, Jolly Associates, 351 Route 4 East, Sandry Sanoco on Route 7 South, East Restaurant, 283 Route 4 East, The Mall Mobile Station, 205 Route 4 East, and Hannaford Supermarket. Motion's been made by JP to approve all of them. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Mary? More time, you're good.
Who won that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. I did speak briefly with our deputy police chief, who indicates that they have reviewed these, and there are no problems that they know of with any. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have approved the liquor licensing. You will have to sign each individual one when you come in to sign the other minutes and so on that we have in the Town Clerk's Office. Please make sure you sign in the correct space, which is the one that says "approved", as opposed to one that we, a number of us, signed on the disapproved column by mistake. So please do be careful about that. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Bill, that we need to deal with?
That is everything on my desk.
That's very good. That's because you moved it over on my desk.
You did.
All right. Carrie Clark, thank you... Oh, wait, there was one other thing. Bill and Carrie, I want to thank you both very much for putting together our town reports. Bill approved the proof, and it went to the printers today for the final printing. So... And the beauty is, the printer is also going to mail out all of the town reports. So we don't have to do what we have done in the past, which is set up a party to go downstairs and put on stickers and so on. So thank you, Bill and Carrie, very much. Nice bit of work. And I think... Let me see if I can pull this up. Featured on the cover is the Town Clerk's Office. It's a very nice photo. So that's our town report. Okay, Carrie?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, that picture came out really nice. I hope people enjoy it. I only have a few things to go over. I did give you the budget status reports for each department. Each department had also received their report as well. So there wasn't anything significant that I could see. The rec did have something that we had to discuss and go over. But it was justified and not necessarily fixed. It was just a way of our accounting and the way that it reflects on our program. And as far as I have the general... The general section in front of me and the things that stand out to me at this point are any significant negative numbers. And right now, those negative numbers that stick out to me are justified with the reimbursement that we received from the state when we applied for COVID relief. We had about almost two grand given back to us in supplies that we used during the significant start of our COVID time, I guess you would say. So we did receive those back, and those monies are put back into the accounts in which they came out of. And that was done today. So if you ever have any questions on the budget report, please let me know. I will be doing this probably once a month, since we probably, on average, meet twice a month. So if you ever see anything significant, let me know ahead of time, so we can go over and find out what's going on. And I will report out once a month on my findings. Any questions on that part?
I have one. And this is on the revenue side, delinquent property taxes. And it shows, we had budgeted for $50,000 coming in, and it shows that we have $102,833. Am I reading that right, that it's additional, more income than we expected?
Yeah, it does look like that.
Okay. Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. We see our delinquent tax collector once or twice each week. And yeah, but he's persistent on getting that number down for us. So I can look more into that and see what that... The details of that line are.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from the Select Board? Again, in line with what our auditors are recommending, we're going to be doing this on a regular basis, so that we can learn a little bit more about how to read these things and also spot areas. We're halfway through the fiscal year now. And spot areas where we may want to slow down spending or realize that we have more money coming in than anticipated. Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Did you have two very quick things more? I just want to remind the Select Board that we have a nice bound copy of our audit report available to us in the office. There are plenty of copies. And the additional reports that are for the Select Board are also with that. If, when they come in to sign, you can request to have those or see a bound copy. Take one, just let me know. I'll grab them for you. And then, the last thing, I wanted to update everyone on the ballot. It is... It's back from being... Well, I got a proof of it today. And it looks good. I'll look at it closely tomorrow morning and say my okay's to the company. They promised that it will be here by the 10th of February, if we're all good with what they sent us for approval, which gives us a couple of weeks, not even really, but to send out absentee ballots. We have a small amount of requests at this time. Nothing like in the past. But if you do request an absentee ballot, you need to give us a call. We are not sending them out in bulk like we did in November. So that's just a gentle reminder that if you need a ballot at your home and you don't wish to come to the polls on Election Day, please let us know, so we can get that to you as soon as possible. And that's all I had tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be having town meeting in... In fact, the Board of Civil Authority met just before this meeting tonight. And the BCA set up the usual polling places at the school for the east side and the west side here at Town Hall. And we have elected ballot clerks for each of those two places. So the polls will be open and available. People who come through must be masked. And if you want your ballots and if you want to vote in advance, you need to be in touch with the Town Clerk's Office. So thank you very much. Any questions of the Select Board for Carrie? John Paul?
All set.
Okay. Thank you. Your box lit up, that's why I called on you. Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Yes, aye. Good evening. I don't have much tonight. It looks like we will have two subdivisions to look at in the near future. One of them is on Thomas Land, Route 7 and Post Road. Vel... Velco is interested in purchasing 32 acres there for an expansion, I believe, of the substation. So that's coming down the pike, and we might have a multifamily housing, small complex going in the southern end of town, Dire and Middle Roads, so on Dire Road, but at the intersection of Middle, that's over near the John Deere dealership there. So not, don't have much information on either one of those. Just looks like that they're going to be working their way through the application process in the next few weeks.
Okay. The latter one was, Dire Road was where we had a site visit last year and determined that we should drop the road classification from, what, three to four, Byron?
Right.
Okay, yeah. So, most of us are familiar with that area because of that site visit, so, thank you.
So the classification would probably have to change back for something like this?
Yes, I would expect so, yes.
Maybe some upgrades.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Which would all be part of an Act 250 application and process, so we would have a chance to weigh in on that. Okay. Oh, Barbara, you should know, and Bill helped me with this, but we did approve the first request for requisition on the Pocket Park grant. So we figured, figured out how to do that. I figured it out. Bill figured it out for me, to be honest. So we have sent that requisition in. You can let your folks at the Regional Planning Commission know that.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Barbara? All right. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
How is everyone this evening?
Good, thank you.
I don't have much. We're just kind of in a waiting pattern with the governor making the next decision on basketball, whether it's...
Mike, you just silenced yourself.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Okay, well, I will take that as, unless you come back on, Mike, I'll take that as not much to report, and you're waiting to hear the governor's next guidance.
I'm here, but...
Okay.
I didn't leave, but that's all I got.
Any questions for Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Yes. The only thing I have for you tonight is to let you know that I proceeded with getting a quote from the state bid on the truck. I also took the liberty of reaching out to a couple of different dealerships and got solicitations from them, just to keep the state bid honest. And the state bid did come in about $1,000 cheaper than what the dealerships would do. So I think this was all approved. I'll just go ahead and email Chuck Williams and let him know that that's a good price, and then we're all set to go. That's for a Ford F-550 with a diesel engine. And my question to you is, there, through, through the state bid, there is no additional warranty available, other than the standard five years, 60,000 mile. If you go through a dealership, all of the dealerships have additional seven-year, 100,000-mile warranties that range anywhere from $3,300 to $5,600. My recommendation is to accept the state bid and forget the extension of the warranty, because if it's going to cost that much, I would take the risk and expect, you know, if you had a, you'd have to have a very catastrophic failure to burn up that much money.
Select Board, anyone have any thoughts on that?
Byron, I have just one question, Byron. I thought the motors, and I think it's just the motor on that six, seven-liter diesel is warranted for seven years or 100,000. Doesn't that come standard? Or am I mistaken? Or do they do something different with the state bid?
The only warranty offered up on the powertrain was five years, 60,000 miles.
Okay. Because I know that if I went out and bought a brand-new pickup, I think it comes standard with seven years, 100,000 miles or something on it, on the drive train or the motor. But that still fits our plan, because we usually keep the trucks just about that long.
Five years?
I would evaluate the truck at the end of five years and then push it out to seven, if you had confidence in the truck itself. I don't think 100,000 miles is that much to demand from that diesel engine, though.
No, not at all.
I think we approved this earlier, so I don't think there's a need to approve it now, unless anybody wants to correct me on that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Byron?
I had a question. This is the time of year, and typically, it's about the end of February when it's due, is our certificate of highway mileage. And typically, it comes in the mail, but I think this year it's going to be something different.
We got it, we got it in email this morning.
We got it in the email this morning?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll have to take that and tweak it or do something with it to get the mapping straightened out for Howard.
Oh, maybe it wasn't certificate. I think this is Complete Streets we got this morning. But the certificate of highway mileage is coming too. I remember seeing that, though, that it was coming email this year.
Okay. Well, as soon as we get it, and it has to be signed and sent back, you know, usually it's about the 20th of February when it's due. And that's our state aid is based on that certificate. So it's an important document to get back in.
Right.
The Complete Streets, I took care of that today and sent that back into the Planning Commission.
To Devon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's all set. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Select Board members, do you have any questions or business with our Town Road Commissioner? How's the plowing going?
If the weather straightens out in the next four weeks, we will probably have a surplus in the winter maintenance budget, but I'm not counting my chickens at this point.
Okay. And if we have wood nearby, we should all be rapping on wood right now. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Byron. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi, Mary. Not much to report. Again, another slow two weeks, about a handful of calls, so I really have nothing to report.
I understand you had a call today, last night?
We had one this morning, and we had one last, yesterday evening-ish. Today was a gas pump got hit by a plow truck that caught fire.
Okay. Well, thank you for handling that.
Yep.
Any questions for the Town Fire Chief? I'm not seeing any, so, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Good evening.
Evening.
So last period, we had 28 calls for service. Again, our hotspot is Green Mountain Plaza, and we've had several breaks in the vehicles at the Hampton Inn, and that's under investigation. VSB's been a big help, they're taking some of these calls also. But again, that seems to be an issue down there. Other than that, I really don't have much. I did talk to Mary about going to executive session when we get done, just a quick, like, for personnel matter.
Questions for the Chief? And then we'll go into executive session toward the end of the meeting. Sharon?
Nothing.
Okay, your box lit up, that's why I asked.
Oh, no.
Okay. John Paul Fagnon, Town Health, thank you, Chief. John Paul, Town Health Officer.
Nothing to report.
Committee meeting updates. We do have the minutes of the, it was Highway Committee, and this was the shared-use path meeting up at the Town Highway Garage with our engineer. Joe, any comments that you want to make about that?
Yeah, that I was sorry that I was preoccupied or previously, or whatever, occupied and I couldn't make it, but reading the minutes, it sounds like we're off to a good start.
Yeah. I think we have settled upon a design, and I think, I think it's going to go forward quite smoothly, so, thank you. Any other committee meetings?
Mary?
Byron?
Yes, in regard to the shared-use path, I got a, received an email late this afternoon from Robert Clark, and he's got two different paths drawn out, one of which, I think he wants to discuss cuts and fills, because one of them does require quite a bit of cuts and fills. The other one, not so much. The one that's not so much is the one that we kind of liked and approved. So my gist is, I think I'm going to, he's going to call me late tomorrow afternoon and discuss that, and I think I'm just going to tell him to continue on with the path that we had selected. There is some cuts there that have to be made, but there's areas where we need to fill anyways, and I don't think it's going to be that bad. But I will look at it further tomorrow on the, I've just looked at it on my phone screen. I'll look at the drawing in better detail tomorrow on my computer, but I just wanted to update you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Byron. Bill, in our packet on the shared-use path, did you send around a copy of the map that showed the schematic?
No.
Okay.
We didn't, I don't think, we didn't attach that to the, we didn't, I didn't attach, I didn't attach that to the minutes, but I can.
Oh, yes, please. And get it around so the Select Board members can see it, too, so we know what we're talking of. Okay. Update on project list? We're slowly and surely crossing things off. We've got the Pocket Park we spoke about today, railroad lawsuit that is in our lawyer, Town Council's hands, War Memorial at Town Hall, and it looks like there's a Grover Drive question. The Highway Department, or the Highway Committee did meet about, just an update on where we were with Grover Drive. Okay, let's go down under new business, please. And we'll start with the Board to Discuss the Use of Force Policy concerning our Police Department. And this is in your packet number two. You may recall that John Paul had raised this issue, and because there is a change in the law about what constitutes appropriate use of force, so he thought it would be important to, well, have an agreement, so our Police Department understands that the town will stand behind them during a time when the law is changing and needs to be interpreted. He made a draft, we sent it up to Town Council, Kevin Brown, and what the number two you see in the packet is what Kevin Brown has approved and sent to us for our consideration. JP?
Move to approve.
Motion's made by JP, and I heard Joe just seconding just before Sharon, so we'll go with Joe. Anything that you want to call to our attention, JP?
I would have. I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Didn't hear you, sorry about that. Any questions or comments by Select Board members? If not, all in favor of adopting the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Bill, it looks like we should do something so the Select Board can sign individually when they're in at the Town Clerk's Office.
Yep, I can do that.
Good, thank you. Okay. Under new business, also, the Board to Discuss the Tax Sale Request from our Delinquent Tax Collector. Jim, what have you got for us?
You should have a document in front of you expressing three properties that need to go up for tax sale. This was a form I found from Dick Lloyd and Bill Blumer, so I figured, since I'm going to be starting some tax sale issues, this would be a good way to get it to the Board and make sure that there's approval for the Board to authorize me to bid on behalf of the town at the minimum amount that's determined when we get to the tax sale. Is there any questions about the properties or the document itself?
Yeah, is there any detriment to the town if we end up owning any of these properties?
Not that I can foresee myself. The third piece of property is a vacant lot on Ruth Ave. There's nothing about it that's, let's say, dangerous or anything like that. The other two properties, I know of no, no issues that would be, say, environmental or something of that sort. And the odds are that the, these properties are reasonably likely to sell.
And so one of the properties is referenced as a life estate. Are the remaindermen on notice? I don't know what you would get by just receiving a life estate.
Yeah, I have, I asked Gary Cutford to take an initial look at these. There's nothing that he noted. He knows that it's a life estate. Basically, I've talked with the family. The owner is in a nursing home with dementia and Alzheimer's.
The owner, when you say owner, the owner of the life estate or the owner of the remainderman interest? Which one?
I honestly don't know.
Yep. So maybe you could ask Gary if it's, I think it's necessary to include all people who have an interest in the property, not just those that are possessing it under a life estate.
Okay, so when you say all folks who have interest in it, please elaborate.
Whoever has what's left over after the life estate. There's a remainderman interest. When somebody has a life estate, they don't own the totality of the interest in the property. They only own it for their life. Once they die, it reverts or goes to the remainderman owner. And I think you have to include everybody.
That would be the names in parentheses. And those, those are the children.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, I didn't understand the terms that you were stating, and I was trying to get to the point where I could. Yeah, I've talked with the family, and financially, it's not in their interest to do anything about the property. And they stated that it should go up for tax sale, because they're not going to invest anything further into it.
I would, I would move to approve the sales.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Aaron. Just for the record, and for those of you who don't see what's in front of the Select Board, these are parcels, .4 acres with a dwelling at 1506 Post Road, property of Young and Palumbo, it looks like. Parcel at 559... Parcel at 559 US Route 7 South, which is MTJ Enterprises doing business as Ground Round. And that's 2.04 acres and includes a restaurant. And this is, as mentioned before, a vacant lot at 150 Ruth Avenue, owned by Real Estate Partners. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the tax sales. Any questions or further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, Mary.
Yep.
So if I understand this right, we are authorizing the delinquent tax collector to enter a bid on behalf of the town. And I was under the impression, and maybe I misunderstood things, when we were talking about the properties in Center Rutland that were going up for tax sale, and we were advised by council that we didn't want to own those. So I'm not sure if this is, this step has to come first, and then there's others, but I just want to be clear that what we're doing is in the best interest of the town.
So Joe, the other properties that we are not going to enter a minimum bid on are carry with them more liability than any potential for recovery of the tax lien. These three properties, according to our tax collector, are marketable and are more likely to yield a figure higher than the town's tax lien.
Okay, so we're not going to be landlords or property owners for parcels of land, then we've got to find something to do with them.
Well, we will own the land, no, yeah, we will own the land for as long as it takes us to sell the land, but they're pretty marketable properties. They don't have any environmental concerns, unlike the other properties, Joe. So we, I thought we were taking it a case-by-case basis. If we, if a property comes up and it's got issues, environmental or otherwise, we don't have to enter the minimum bid.
Okay. All right, as long as, as long as we're not, you know, I worry about us, you know, putting good money after bad, but I understand that a little bit.
My thing to Joe was, even if we ended up owning these three, they're really not that bad of a property to own. You know, we could, we could sell them in pretty good shape, I would think.
Yeah, hopefully somebody will outbid us and we won't have to worry.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of authorizing the collector of delinquent taxes to enter into a bid on behalf of the town for the taxes owed on these three properties, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed? If not, the ayes have it. And again, this is another document needing signature of Select Board members when you come in. Okay, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome, appreciate your time.
All right. New Business Item C. The Board to Discuss Rescheduling the March 2nd Board Meeting, which happens to fall on Town Meeting Night. So when this has happened in the past, I think we, well, we can move it to the night before, which is the Monday, and we have the informational part of the Town Meeting. Is it at 7:00, Bill? I think it is.
Well, it'd be kind of the same, same schedule as the, it'll just be a little different than the pre-Town Meeting we did a couple weeks ago.
Yeah. Yeah. Slightly different time.
I would move that we move the March 2nd Select Board Meeting to March 1st at 5:00 PM via conference call or Zoom.
Back to either Carrie or Bill. The Town Meeting informational portion, is that at 6:00 or at 7:00?
That's at 7:00.
Okay. So, you know, we would be on Zoom for two hours, or we could have a two-hour Select Board Meeting if we start at 5:00. Is that acceptable to folks?
Well, we could start at 5:30, as long as we can get the meeting in and done before the other meeting starts, so we don't have to adjourn and come back, or recess and come back. Are we first on the second? Or that night, will we be presenting the stuff first, or we're going to wait for the School Board? Or it doesn't really matter?
I think the School Board went first, and this year they go first again at the informational meeting.
But if, you know, if the Board members want to be part of that, or any of the public wants to be part of that, then we'll have to end our meeting about five or 10 minutes to 7:00, so things can get reorganized. Can we do a meeting in an hour and a half?
We have.
We can do it just like we did last time. When we did it for pre-Town Meeting, it's exactly what we did. We had our meeting first, and we recessed and came back. It was, it worked out very well.
Yeah, if we have to. So maybe we could have our meeting at 5:30 instead of 5:00. I'm okay with that, I'll remake my motion to 5:30.
Okay, motion's been made to reschedule our Select Board Meeting to March 1st at 5:30 via Zoom. Is there a second? Sharon? Oh, JP seconded, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. We've rescheduled our next Select, or our March Select Board Meeting to March 1st. Okay. New Business Item D. I had asked Bill to put this on. It says Board to Discuss COVID-19 Vaccine Immunizations. You'll recall, a couple of meetings ago, we designated all of the Town employees as essential employees, and I would just quickly like to ask if our Town employees are in fact getting immunized against COVID. So, Bill, what do you know about this? I think you've already been immunized, right?
I've had one of two. Beyond that, I don't know of any, you know, the Police Department and the Fire Department have been tracking their own individuals. Beyond that, I don't know if anybody through the Town Offices or the Transfer Station has started that or not.
Okay. So let's start with Fire Chief Clark. Do you, do you have any sense of how many of your firefighters have received the shots?
We have 36 members. Five have informed me that they are not getting one, and we have three people left that are waiting their turn.
Okay. Good, thank you. Chief Dumas, our Police Department.
We've all been immunized for the first shot so far.
Okay, good. Larry Delvanary. Transfer Station staff.
Yes, dear. What can I do for you?
Okay. Just checking to see whether you folks have had an opportunity to get your COVID-19 shots, or at least the first one.
I've got mine, Bill's waiting to get his.
Okay.
Bill's not on the, he's not on the list to get one until probably later in the month.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And the folks here in the Town Office, Town Clerks, are you folks able to get in to get your shots okay?
No, because we don't meet the requirements yet. As for the state, as far as, I think they're doing 75 and older, right? So both Susan and I are not scheduled for that. I do know that Marcia was looking into getting an appointment. She may already have one. And I'm not sure about the rest of, the rest of us.
Marcia would be one of our listeners, Howard. Are you able to get in okay?
I'm getting mine tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you.
And Marcia is scheduled for hers.
Okay. Good, have we covered everybody then? Okay. So thank you very much. I, you know, I wanted to make sure that folks were getting in okay and that we'll all try and have those shots to help with the whole herd immunity thing. So thank you all. Is there any other new business to be brought before the Board?
So I had an item that I wanted to ask the Board to consider. For those of us that were around when it happened, when Josh Terenzini was first elected to the Board, he was the youngest Select Board member ever to be elected, and then he went on, in my view, to serve the town extraordinarily well. And I was wondering if there would be any consensus on the Board for us giving him a plaque just to reflect our appreciation for the job that he did for all the years he sat on this Board.
I would second that, John.
All right. Very appropriate, thank you, JP. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, good. JP, will you work on some language for us, please?
I will, I got a guy.
Okay, thank you very much.
I bet you do.
All right. I do have one item. I was up at the Transfer Station a week or so ago. Noticed not only that we have our new bin to contain our compacted waste, it's nice green color, not rust-colored as the old one was. I also noticed Larry Dell brought me in and showed me the office, which has been painted a very cheery yellow, and new curtains. Now, I don't think Larry did the curtains, I think that was Mrs. Dell. But thank you all for sprucing up our transfer station. Nice work. Thank you, Larry. And please convey that to your wife as well. We appreciate it. Okay. Is there anything else that any of our, we're going to, remember, we have a request from the Chief of Police to go into executive session for a personnel matter. Before we do that, is there any other item of business that needs to come before the Board?
Marty has his hand raised.
Yes, he does, Marty.
I noticed a letter hanging in the office at the fire station that came from the Board of Selectmen that specifically refers to the Town of Rutland covering the officers if they're out in their own vehicle doing something that's Town business. You know, not necessarily a fire call, but if they're out doing something. I never thought about this. I don't know if I, as the Emergency Management Officer, need to have a letter like that with the Board approving to cover me, but for example, when I've gone to Mount Pilia for a meeting, or I'm up at the Fire Academy for a meeting, or wherever, I'd like to know if I could be added to a letter, either that letter or to one such as that.
I wouldn't see any reason why not. Frankly, Marty, we probably overlooked you, we apologize. We can get that, I can get something together for the Board to take a look at for its next meeting.
Thank you. I also have another question, and this is just a question. With emergency management people now having the ability to be vaccinated, and we're worried about the spread of the virus, are we going to have any kind of policy about those people in service to the town that have the ability to be vaccinated but do not want to have the vaccine?
We have no policy on that at this point. And one of the reasons I kind of went through the bit of a roll call on who has received the vaccine was just to kind of encourage everyone, please do get the shots for your own protection and for the protection of the townspeople that you serve. JP?
Yeah, you know, that's the current subject of debate. What, if any, restrictions can be placed, if necessary, on folks that don't want to get the vaccine? There's no, there's no easy answer. What would be your concerns, Marty?
Well, my concern is, we're all taking precautions because of this pandemic. Thanks to you as Health Officer, I noticed people in the Fire Department, for example, at the Transfer Station. We're all wearing masks. We're requiring people to wear masks. I would think there would be people that would not wear masks if they didn't have to. And it's the same thing with the vaccination. You know, we have, the vaccine is available to us. We don't know how this will prevent. And even if you are vaccinated, will it prevent you spreading it or not? But we have that availability, and it's a protection. So if someone's saying they don't want to be vaccinated, they in turn are making it susceptible to pass on to someone else. And I don't know how we should be looking to handle that.
Yeah, I mean, you raise a good issue.
Yeah, I think it would be pretty hard to require an employee or anyone to get the vaccination. We can require them to take the precautionary stuff, but I'm not sure if you can require them to be immunized. But that would be, I think that's a Kevin Brown question and answer. There are certain rights employees have or whatever. It's kind of like the shots that kids get to go to school. You know, they, some parents don't want their children to get those shots, and it's, that's an area that's been in constant debate for years.
Okay. Anything further on that? Couple of quick things before we go into executive session. Bill handed me a Community Leadership in Action. This is a handbook, it's pretty hefty. So I'm going to leave it here in the offices. Any Select Board member who'd like to look through it is welcome. Please do return it so the next one can take a look. It's put out by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. And then, congratulations to the Town of Rutland from the 2020 Census folks who thank us for helping, especially Bill Sweet, for helping get our numbers up. And I understand the number of respondents from Rutland Town to the Census questions was pretty significant. And Marty Westerman, I know, was one of the Census takers. So thank you all for your efforts. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session with the Police Chief for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter.
Don't move.
Motion's made, Aaron seconded. All in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
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 Okay. So we're in executive session. It's 7:10. 23, it looks like, 7:22. Before we take a motion to adjourn, I have one other thing in the packet, at least for you, Sharon, and for me, are the Town of Rutland Scholarship information sheets that we have sent out. Bill, did the rest of the Select Board get it?
No, just the two of you.
Okay. Sharon, we should do a quick Scholarship Committee meeting in the next week or so, so we can finalize this and get them out to guidance offices in the area high schools.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there any other business to be brought before the Town? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Let's see, I think it was Aaron, and then Joe was second. All in, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good evening all, and thanks for joining in.